22 Anacortes City Council Meeting. Ms. Hunt, do you take the role?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
I would like to excuse Mr. Young as he is traveling right now.
Second. Okay, a motion by Mr. Carter, second by Mr. McDougal to excuse Mr. Young. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. So that takes us to number three on our agenda. Announcement Committee Reports. I've got two quick announcements. Next week, because it's the fifth Monday, we will not have a council meeting. And the second announcement is, next week is already February, if you can believe it. I can't, but the library hours will be changing from 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. starting February 1st. And now to 3A, the Housing Affordability Committee Service Committee, and I think that's Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, thank you. So on January 20th, we had a HACs meeting. It was only about 30 minutes. So we talked a little bit about the fact that Mr. Kosovich from Skagit County came and spoke to our committee a week prior. We decided, we talked a little bit about what information was included and decided that we really want to individually come up with a list of questions, and then at our next meeting this next Thursday, we're going to compile those questions and figure out what kind of further action we want to take. There's a few people that we're considering we would like to talk to based on our meeting with the county, someone from the Friendship House, possibly the Housing Commission, and some other folks. So we've got some more direction of where we want to gather more information and research. Right before this meeting, we had a quick conversation. We popped off the Thursday meeting because the county is, a lot of folks have already heard about, was, had docketed the fully contained communities. At that meeting last Thursday, they decided to suspend it from the docket until it had gone through the pathways, through the SCOG organization. And so, so we are very appreciative of that fact, and the planning committee would like to acknowledge the fact that they've decided to hold off until the GMA Steering Committee is able to take more of a deep dive of it in relation to the cities. A few of our other cities in the community did a resolution encouraging this to happen. We did not do it in time, but we would like to kind of send a thank you note acknowledging the choice that they made. So I think you'll see that come up in the next week or two. We'd like Mr. Meesmer to just take a quick look at it from the planning perspective. But just, you know, it's really important that we all work together as a county. And so that's it.
All right. Thank you for the ad hoc planning committee report as well. One, any other announcements or committee reports that I may have missed? Okay, we're on to item four, which is public comment opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any item that is not on the agenda this evening. And I will pause to make sure, we'll go to the online attendees, looking for a hand Okay, none noted. Anybody here? I think everybody else is here to speak on agenda items. All right, on to the consent agenda items.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
With no objections, I move to approve the consent agenda, Alpha through Delta.
My second thought.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Carter, second by Mr. McDougal to approve a consent agenda items A through D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Thank you for that. And as we all know, the legislative priorities on there, and I will communicate those to our legislative reps as soon as possible. So thank you. All right, on to number, item number six, our public hearings. And first up is going to be Mr. Hoagland to talk about Resolution 3069. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. Resolution 3069, so this is to authorize a surplus of material that was originally purchased for utility use. There's a state law that requires a public hearing before any utility assets can be surplus. So this is copper tubing that was originally purchased by the water utility some years ago. The water utility has gone away from copper, now uses a different technology. This is aging assets that are still on hand. There are still a number of municipal water, pardon me, water utilities in the area that use this type of material, and this type of material has become hard to get. Prices are up lead times are long. So we're asking for council to approve the surplus of this material so we can look to sell it to a neighboring jurisdiction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And this does require a public hearing, so that's why we're having this. And any members of the public wishing to comment on this? Looking at, making sure there isn't anybody online? Okay. All right, so I think it would be appropriate to close the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing and then turn it over to council. Counsel, questions for Mr. Hoagland?
Mr. Mayor, one other point of interest I was going to mention, I talked with Terry Nemeth in the Water Utility Department, the Water Department. He estimated the value of this material to be between $15,000 and $20,000. It's not a, better than a poke in the eye, but it's more of a, kind of a good neighbor gesture to get that material out into the, into the area.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Hearing no objections, it sounds great to earn a little extra money and also help nearby jurisdictions. So I move to approve Resolution 3069 to surplus copper tubing.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick. Need to, two for Resolution 3069 authorizing surplus of copper tubing. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, on to other business. We've got year-end finance update and discussion, and there's going to be some action to go along with this. Over to Mr. Hoagland again.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. So put together a few slides to go through year-end status, and couple of high points here, just to start off with, a reminder of the $1.3 million ARP grant the city received in 2021. We saw our sales tax continue to grow. You may remember that from the end of 2020, how the economy had recovered from recession. Sales tax in particular was growing at a pretty rapid rate. That continued through 2021, in no small part bolstered by construction. Construction continued to be quite strong in other real estate-related areas. The unemployment rate, we started the year nationwide at least at 6.3% unemployment, ended the year at 3.9% unemployment, but in that same time saw inflation rise 7% over that same 12-month period, so an active year.
Mayor Miller.
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Hoagland. So on our screen, I'm seeing ordinance 4010, and then in the small, I'm seeing your PowerPoint slide kind of small on the COA podium screen. I don't know if that could be switched or how that would work so people at home could see it in a larger format.
That's a good question. We are working to resolve that, and if there's anything I need to do, I will work to resolve All right, we're getting, we're getting close. How's that? All right, I got thumbs up. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So this next slide is just kind of repeating what was on that first slide in graphic format. Couple of other items are the real estate excise tax because of the strong real estate market 2021, that continued to increase as well. And utility tax, we've talked about this for a few years now, but the private utility tax continues to be flat, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. This is the, kind of, I think all of these charts that you'll see here tonight will look familiar. This is chart that shows all of our tax and shared revenue streams. And you can see the blue is what we, the blue bar is what identifies our revenue budget, and the orange is what our actual revenues were, the actual tax receipts for that revenue stream. And you can see in all cases, the actuals exceeded what we had budgeted for. I would point out that if you looked at the bottom line, we're about $3 million, $2.5 million over what we budgeted, that most of those revenues are restricted. So that doesn't all fall to the bottom line of, you know, non-restricted spendable cash, but it does bolster all of those, all of those areas. So the first one, sales tax. This is a look at the rate, the receipts by month, the bars are by month, and then the line chart is the cumulative, red being our actual receipts, blue being what we had budgeted. And you can see every month, the budget was well exceeded by actual receipt. So we finished the year about 14.6 over budget in the sales tax revenues. Related sales tax still, this is the look at our top 10 market segments. So these are the NAXIS codes that sales taxes collected and calculated into these, these codes by the state. So it's the state's way of keeping track of those different revenues by the different types of retailers. So our number one generating sales tax segment was this all other miscellaneous stores. This is the NAXIS code that the online shopping platforms fall within. So our online sales is the single largest sales tax generator in 2021, followed by cars, boats, construction, restaurants, and supermarkets. So looking at the top five, this, this segment right here, top economic sectors 2021, what I'm doing here is just combining all of those construction-related NAXIS codes, including subcontractors and material sellers. And that puts us well into the number one category, that construction category, followed by hospitality, adding together all of the different types of hospitality, full-service restaurants, partial service, hotels, et cetera. And then the e-platforms, vehicles, and boats. So those are our top five, top five bill payers. Looking at those same five segments compared to last year, it's incredible the way each of those has grown. Some of them are pretty obvious. For example, restaurants were closed most of 2020. All of these segments were affected at some level by, by the different quarantines that were in place, but 2021 far exceeded the activity in 2020. So continuing to talk about sales tax, this is just looking at the last six years, how our sales tax actual revenues have compared against what we budgeted, you know, the initial budget expectation. And in all, all but one of those years, actuals exceeded what we had budgeted, and that exception Utility tax, so we talk a lot about property, sorry, sales tax and utility tax, because those are two of our three largest tax revenue streams, the third being property tax. But sales tax and utility tax are more, more volatile than property tax. Utility tax, this is looking at the combination of both private utility tax and public utility tax. Private utility tax is that tax which is charged against private utilities, which is electricity, natural gas, cable TV, and telephone service. The public utilities are the services that the city offers, water, sewer storm, and solid waste. So combining those two, our overall utility tax revenue has exceeded budget by 7.8%. Most notable, I think, at least best news for me, this bullet over here on the right, the private utility tax, for the first time in several years, actually increased in 2020, 2021, over what we saw the prior year. Building permits has been, the building revenues have been very, very strong for a number of years, and this is most interesting, looking back at 2018 when there was a bit of a slowdown, and you can see how that affected the, the building activities, specifically the number of permits issued. So this orange line is the number of building permits issued by year, and you can see the huge drop off from 2018 to 2019. You don't see as significant a drop off in revenues though, and that's a reflection on the types of homes that have now been built for the last few years. They just have, they're higher value homes than, than what was built in the past. On the side, over here on the right side, I put the nine-year average, I use nine years because that's the, the data set that's illustrated here. Nine-year average for permits issued is 86, and revenue average in that same period is 669,000. And you can see in 2021, number of permits issued is less than that average, but the revenues are more than that average. This is looking at our emergency reserves in the general fund. So we talked about this late in the year. Council adopted an ordinance 4003, which revised the city's fund balance policy and identified that 17% of the year's operating expenditures, which doesn't include capital or non-cash expenses, would be calculated to fund the city's rainy day fund. So this is based on preliminary data at this point. It's based on 2021. The 2021 year hasn't closed out yet, but these are pretty close. We won't, we won't see any material changes to these balances. But our total lending cash is shaping up to be about 9.6 million. Of that, about 3.9, almost 4 million will be restricted in the rainy day fund. We have about 424,000 in other restricted monies in the general fund, leaving a little over 5 million for operating reserves. And the charts over here, the two charts, January 2021, shows what our cash reserves look like under our old ordinance and what it currently looks like. So freed up a lot of working capital for the general fund while maintaining a healthy rainy day reserve of nearly 4 million. This is looking at our actuals, actual expenditures to our budgeted expenditures. The next chart shows revenue. So this is just looking at budgeted actuals. And we're well within budget across, across the board with the exception of these three areas identified here. There is a budget amendment ordinance after this that would, that would correct all of this, but I wanted to just touch briefly on this. The, the first one, the 356,000, it's, it shows us an over-budget condition, but it's to get, but let me, let me explain. The affordable housing sales tax, you'll remember that's the 1/10th of 1% sales tax the voters approved to support affordable housing opportunities in the city of Anacortes. The city has partnered with both the Anacortes Housing Authority and the Anacortes Family Center to pass that money on. So the city collects it and then passes that directly on to those other entities, Family Center and the Housing Authority. When this tax first was established, we didn't have agreements in place with both entities by the end of the year, so that cash that we had collected rolled over into 2021 and has since been distributed. As I showed earlier in sales tax, all of the sales tax-related revenue streams have far exceeded what we had budgeted, and that's another reason why this is over budgeted. So we had carryover cash from last year that we expended out this year. Also, the revenues that we brought in and then turned around and expended out exceeded what we had anticipated during the budget development process. This next one down, EMS, 41,000 over budget. So I have that in the budget amendment upcoming. It's targeting our, our overtime budget in the EMS fund. So you may remember last, I think it was last month I brought budget amendment, and we talked about some of these, some of these items, one of them being the EMS fund. We had, we had much more activity in the EMS fund, that's the ambulance service fund in 2021 than we were anticipating. We were kind of, when we put the budget together, we were still in the midst of COVID. We were thinking it would be another slow year like 2020 was. 2021 has been much more active, you know, a lot of the quarantines have ended, and so there's, there's no issue with cash. There's, the revenues are, the revenues are high enough to cover any of these unanticipated expenditure streams or expenditure overages, and that's what, that's what we're looking at here. So it's kind of a housekeeping item. Probably should have caught this earlier when I was looking at EMS, but there are some accruals in the payroll, payroll accounting that I wasn't thinking about, and so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that, but it's, it's a result of the additional activity in the EMS fund. Solid waste, so 294,000 at this point in an over-budget condition. So some of this is, and I think I have a slide on this following, but some of this is due to unanticipated expenditures in the legal department dealing with the A Avenue, the old A Avenue dump cleanup issue. So we're starting to experience legal expenditures because of that. Additionally, there's some of our just utility budgeting that hasn't kept pace with what the actual costs have been. Our rate structure is sufficient to, to collect those revenues needed to deal with those expenditures. It's just the budgeting aspect of that hasn't kept up. And again, this is housekeeping. We had a change in management in the operations area during the year. I've already talked with the new operations manager about this, and we'll, we'll get this budget, part of it cleaned up. There is another element to this, as far as revenues versus expenditures, we'll talk about in a little bit, but as far as the expenditure budget side goes, it's, it's really just housekeeping. So that's what I have on budget to expenditure at this point. If there's any questions, I'd really like to try and address those, any questions that you might have. Okay, so this next chart, looking at our revenues versus expenditures, take this, this column over here, that the title is made or lost, take that with a grain of salt. We don't have profits in the city. It's just kind of the terminology that, that makes sense to give us a, kind of a baseline to work from. But you, dropping down the, the list here, you can see all of our funds are in very good fiscal condition at year end, with most revenues exceeding expenditures across most funds, with a few exceptions. And most of the exceptions were planned, like for instance, in road construction, we had a planned use of REIT and impact fees, and that's, I think, the biggest project we had there was the Oaks Avenue project. That was a planned use of, of capital that we had in that fund. So that was in an intended use of reserves in that case. The next one down, parks construction, this 192,000, where expenditures exceeded revenues by that amount. It's exactly the same issue. We had that, that large cemetery project, we worked out of that fund. We had the resources there that we planned on using. Affordable housing, we've talked about a little bit. This is some of those carryover funds from 2021 that we've expended now in the current year, and that's strictly pass-through. We don't keep any of that on hand. REIT, it's the same thing. We, the 1.2 million in REIT to support our overlay capital projects and road construction projects. So this last one down here, solid waste, this is the, the exception to that. Talked with Mayor Miller about this a little bit, and talked with my staff about this a little bit. So we're going to do a little deeper dive on this fund because we, we have structured our, our rates to accommodate utility increases. So this was the, the second consecutive year that we, we saw a use of cash reserves. It's not a huge use. I think we have 3 million in reserves in that fund, so there's not any kind of a fiscal impact. You know, we could, we could operate this way for, for years, but we do want to get our hands around the cause of that. So that's something we're, we're taking a look at now as part of our year-end procedures. This change in cash, take this with a grain of salt too. This is, this chart really doesn't mean anything without the explanation of this use of cash or the amount lost, kind of quote, in air quotes. It was an intended use, and it's just these areas, these funds where we expended more than we brought in is what's identified here, and then the bigger, the bigger piece of pie showing, just a way to illustrate that the majority of our funds did bring in more revenues than expenditures, and in the, ending the year at a healthier level than we started the year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have on any of that, expenditures That must be my last, my last slide. So next is, next up is the ordinance to address these few areas in the, with the budget amendment. But before we get off of that, I'd like to make sure, make sure there aren't any questions or, or concerns that.
Yes, so that, that ends the, the discussion on the finance update, and are there any comments from the public on the finance update, either online? I'm looking for hands raised. Got a few attendees.
Mayor Miller, I've got a question if no one.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Carter. Oh, sorry, Mr. McDougal.
Thanks. Mr. Hoagland, back on the permitted units slide, I know we've had a significant uptick in kind of like, you know, non-single-family home sort of permits, I guess? You know, like apartments, townhouses, things like that in the last year and a half? Are those calculated differently, or is that, I guess the SFR, single-family resident?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a good, it's a good point. So that's, it's a differentiation that I don't make in, in this slide when I'm, I'm only looking at the single-family residence, number of permits issued during the year. That's just kind of, I guess, the marker that I use year to year to kind of judge the performance against, you know, historical norms. But you're right, that revenue does include any permit revenue from commercial buildings that were permitted during the year, but would not be reflected in the number of permits issued.
Does the revenue also include like multifamily units, like?
Yes, exactly. In fact, that, that revenue stream includes all of the building permit activity, anything. Yeah, exactly.
So I know quite a few multifamily unit permits have come online in the last year and a half. Are the, the actual revenues for those permits, are they significantly lower than like a single-family residence?
No, they would likely be, be more as it's, yeah, those are, those are based on values, so those would likely be more. So if we had a higher level, yeah, it's a fair point you're making. If we had a higher level of commercial activity during the year, that revenue stream would show a spike up, but you wouldn't see a corresponding spike in the number of permits issued.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And then things like duplexes and triplexes, are they, do they just show up as SFR in this report?
I think those are multifamily. I think those are multifamily as well.
They are multifamily, okay.
Correct, yeah.
So, if there were a lot of multifamily, would we see a decoupling of the orange trend from the blue trend?
Yeah, yeah, it's very, yeah, very possible. In fact, if there was a significant number of those types of multifamily or commercial permits issued during the year, there might be a significant decoupling of those two metrics.
Okay. I guess the uptick that we have seen has just, it's just not such a large uptick that it's actually showing that decoupling, because I don't see an obvious decoupling here the last couple of years. So, maybe it would just take a lot more multifamily to do that.
Yeah, and it's an interesting question. And it wouldn't be difficult to break this down, to, you know, get a little more detail with this information. So, maybe the next finance update, I can kind of work with my staff. Maybe we can come up with some ideas to show a little more detail in the building department.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, actually.
Yeah, it's a great point, because I think probably off the top of all of our heads, we could probably think of six multifamily projects going on, you know. So, is that going to really push the scales because it's just six? Granted, it's a lot of living units, but it's still a single permit. But, great question. And, yeah, we'll make sure to get that information, make it a little clearer. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I think it's worth pointing out whenever we talk about building permit revenue for the education of the public, that we get this revenue in, we're only allowed to spend building permit revenue on processing building permits. So, it's not a moneymaker for the city per se. Nobody likes paying these fees, but they should know it's just covering the service.
Excellent point. And it helps us, you know, hire potentially building inspectors. That's kind of the area that helps make the process flow. But, of course, what we are seeing it is the sales tax in construction. That's the revenue that we can use. So, yeah, thank you for that. Any other comments, council, members of the public? One more chance to comment on the year-end finance update, and then we'll go over to the ordinance. All right. Over to item 7B, ordinance 4010. Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you, Mayor. This, again, what we've been talking about here. So, within the whereas is, there is one additional area that I didn't talk about in the finance update, because it wasn't over budget at that point. But that's in the lodging tax area. So, I do want to point out, we do have one more check run for 2021 that will occur the next time council meets. Our cutoff is actually tomorrow for 2021 invoices. So, this isn't final data. It won't change materially. But one area that, I know there are a couple of outstanding expenditures, is in the lodging tax arena. So, earlier in the year, there were some mid-year applications that council approved. There were EV chargers and additional parklets that were placed downtown for the restaurants to use downtown. So, those, and some additional, there was an additional expenditure late in the year at the chamber. So, those items weren't included in the original budget, and I have those included here tonight in this budget amendment. Additionally, the fire and EMS departments, we have two separate departments for fire and EMS, but we do need to look at them together. They are the same set of staff. We just parse their time out depending on what they're working on, either ambulance service or in the fire. We talked about the overtime impact from the additional EMS activity during the year and the solid waste impact. We talked about that as well. And then, down in the details of the accounting, we have the activity of the affordable housing. So, the lodging tax, the affordable housing, sales tax, EMS, and solid waste. So, adjustments to those four funds. And I'd be happy to discuss those further if you have questions or thoughts.
Okay, this is for discussion and/or possible action.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I move approval of ordinance 4010 as presented.
I can't...
Okay, motion by Mr. Walters, second by, was that Ms. Hubig? Or was, no, that was Ms. Moulton, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. To approve ordinance 4010 amending the 2021 budget. Ms. Hunt?
Ms. Clela McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you for that. And, Mr. Hoagland, I think you're still up for discussion only on resolution 3073, updating planning fees for unified fee schedule.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, this is, there's a couple of things going on here. So, Planning did a nice job of going through their, the planning fees and making, really clarifying a lot of what those fees were for. And they made a few updates to the fees themselves, but it was mostly just housekeeping and clarifying the structure and outline of the fees. Included with the council packet was this crosswalk. And I wanted to point out, there's a reference number, you can see in red font here. So, each one of these tick marks, it's one through, one through 68, has a corresponding tick mark down here in the bottom of the file, the legend, if you will. So, you can scroll through and see how most of these don't have any change in the fee. It was just clarification of that fee. So, these are what's being requested for consideration tonight. Additionally, there's one other change in the unified fee schedule that we're requesting, and that's adding the cemetery fees to the unified fee schedule. Currently, those cemetery fees reside elsewhere outside the fee schedule. So, we're not asking for an increase in any of those cemetery fees tonight, just inclusion in the unified fee schedule to make it easier to address those edits in the future. Be happy to try and answer any questions council may have on either of those issues.
And again, we're not looking for action tonight. So, if you take time to go through there and if you've got any questions, feel free to reach out to staff or myself to get any clarification.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. Right now, it looks to me, from what I've read, that, like you said, there are no substantive changes to the fees themselves. There's the, including the cemetery fees within the unified fee schedule. So, that brings that all together. It's kind of a housekeeping thing with the new numbers related to the other fees, just the category numbers. And I think there was only one other change that I saw, and it was to process a critical areas report, maybe for $120. But it seems to me that, from what I read, that's all that's changed here, right? So, nothing else has changed materially. So, nothing's getting more expensive. Nothing's being changed in that way. Is that right?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's correct, although I will give a precursor to the cemetery piece. We will have that discussion in the coming weeks. But, that's a discussion for later. But we will be obviously including it in our unified fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor, so...
Mr. Hoagland.
If it's okay with council, then when this comes back, we could bring it back on consent unless you'd like to have additional conversation next time. But you can reach out during the week to either myself, Emily, and Planning. We'd be happy to answer questions.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, I actually thought that we were going to be adopting it tonight, and I'd be okay with doing that. But I'm glad to see the cemetery fees come over to the unified fee schedule. Anything that we can find out there, I think probably the Parks Department is maybe the largest repository of fees that aren't on the unified fee schedule. Anything that we can find to bring into the unified fee schedule, I think, is a good thing so that they have explicit council authorization and regulation of those fees and so that we're aware of them. But also, I expect that because the planning department is going to be deploying new permitting software, that they might find that they need to make some additional adjustments to their planning fees to work better with the software, or because they discover something else as they're implementing the software. And I think that they ought to be encouraged to do that. We can be flexible. They should bring it back if they've got any other changes.
Well, I mean, I'm certainly flexible. If it's council's desire to make a motion, then I'm open to that.
From my look at the agenda, it didn't indicate we weren't going to adopt it. So, unless there's an objection, I'd move approval of the fee schedule as presented of the resolution.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Carter to approve resolution 3073, updating planning fees for unified fee schedule. Ms. Hunt?
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Clela McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Onto item 7D, ordinance 4011, authorize an acceptance of restricted donations. For discussion, possible action, and I think this is going to be a tag-team event from the staff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's a requirement by the city code that requires restricted assets of certain size be accepted by city council. So, that's what we have tonight. Mr. Lunsford is here to provide more information, and I believe a guest is here with him for the same subject.
All right. And we're already tagging out to Mr. Lunsford.
Well, in Parks and Recreation, we like sports analogies, so thank you, Mayor Miller.
Yeah.
Good evening, council, mayor, and audience. We live in a great community where people have stepped forward to try to fund the things that we want to build. And sometimes they initiate that idea as well. So, this is that case, where we were approached by a community organization, and they wanted to build a skate park as soon as we could. So, they had some money that they raised, and then they came forward with an anonymous donor for half a million on top of the $50,000 they raised. And then, another organization in the community, the Anacortes Quanis Club, through the Anacortes Parks Foundation, came through with $100,000 more. So, we have $650,000 in that fund now through private entities that they would like to donate to the city so that we can start construction of the skate park. And I could tell you more about it, but I brought with me tonight Ms. Rachel Montine. She owns Trinity Skates and is with the Anacortes Skate Park Improvement Project. And so, they are the major donor. I thought maybe she could say a few words to you about the inspiration for this and their ideas. And then, I can come back up and talk to you some more if you have any questions.
Sounds great. Well, thank you for coming, and go for it.
Hi.
Hello.
So, my name is Rachel Montine Salazar, and I'm the president of the Anacortes Skate Park Improvement Project. Pretty long name, but gets the point across. So, this project was started about two years ago, because I opened the skate shop about three years ago. And I was really surprised by how many people would come into the skate shop regularly and mention, is there anything that's being done about the local park? Is it going to be rebuilt? And I was like, wow, there's so many people that want this. So, when we started, we had raised about $20,000 when we had first come to city council quite some time ago. And since then, it's been an amazing whirlwind of donations and anonymous half a million dollars, which has put us in a whole nother ballpark, which has allowed us to get another donation from Quanis, which John mentioned, which has been super amazing. All in all, we realized that this project is something that's going to help improve the overall atmosphere of the park. It's going to improve safety, and it's going to make it so people's ability to skateboard isn't going to be limited by the quality of the park. And not just that, but a gathering place for the community and people of other actions for interest. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank Parks and Recs and City Council for working with us. It's been really nice to work with them, which has been a pleasant surprise. And we just want to thank city council for letting us come talk with you and being a part of getting Anacortes a skate park. It deserves. Thank you.
No, thanks so much. And I remember when you came to talk to council a while ago. So, this is pretty exciting. It's always exciting to accept very generous donations to improve our wonderful city. So, next, so, council, on the acceptance of the funds, comments, oh, open, members of the public, sorry. This is open for public comment. Any members of the public wishing to comment on this? Waiting for raised hands, looking in the audience. None seen. Okay, council.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I think this will be a tremendous improvement to the existing skate park. Been getting comments for quite a few years about the condition of the skate park. And I'm glad that we've received money for this project that is a pre-existing project that the city wanted to do. It's great when we get money, but it's even better when we get money for a project that we've already got on our agenda as one that we want to take on. And I'm glad that Mr. Lunsford and the Parks Department are following our processes of bringing it to council for approval, and that Mr. Lunsford had given us a heads-up that there are quite a few parts to this whole process, not all of which are on the agenda tonight, so that we are aware of them before we start taking action on them individually. So, I'm just very excited overall, and I really want to extend my appreciation to the donors.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Carter?
I just wanted to say, good job to the skate shop also, because you guys have stayed on top of it, keeping it moving forward and not giving up something that we've wanted to do. And having you behind it and keeping the ball rolling is a really good job. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. And to Mr. Walters' point, I think one of the pieces he was alluding to a little bit is the capital facilities plan. And so, we will, in the future, adjust that to work with the timeline here. So, that's another piece of this puzzle. But accepting the money is what's on the table right now.
Mayor Miller?
That was Mr. McDougal.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm really excited about this opportunity and the donations as well. This is, you know, Mr. Lunsford shared with the Parks Committee, like the website of the design firm, and, you know, you got to browse through and see examples of skate parks that they've designed. And I think we're going to end up with something that's really very, very cool. So, if there's no other questions or comments, I move to adopt ordinance 411 as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Hubig. Ms. Hunt?
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Clela McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. And as quickly as we accept the money, Mr. Lunsford's going to tell us how we're going to spend the money.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you have, before you, a contract presentation from Grindline, Skate Parks Incorporated. And so, they are the ones that we would like to design and bid, prepare the bid documents for this. And Grindline is a company that's known throughout the country. They do this work. They're based out of Seattle, fortunately for us, so we can talk to them quite easily. And they've been part of this project from early discussions with Ms. Montine Salazar. So, what the contract would do would help us get some of the community meetings get started. Ms. Montine Salazar has already been talking to people for a couple of years, so she has a great idea. We would work in-house here to create a survey opportunity for the community that we'd share with not only our community, but some of our partners in the community, and help to get the word out what people would like to see, so that they can tell us what they're looking for in this. And then, from that, we would come together with some options for the features of the park. We know that we've talked about in the past, the idea of moving the... We know that we've talked about in the past the idea of moving the parking lot from its current location to the south end, in case there's ever a community use center that's there, that those two parking lots could become one and make sense. But even so, it would fit the needs of the current parking, parking needs of the skate park. We believe it's going to be a much more popular, popular place. So as Mayor Miller said, you know, we would like to spend some of the money that was just donated to us, and this is the concept before you. And sometimes in planning a design, it's, you know, our costs we look at are like 8% to 10% of overall build. This is a little bit higher, it's around 12%, 13%, because it's a unique design. It's not a road, it's not curb, gutter, sidewalk, it's a unique situation that we want community to put on, so it'll take a little more at the design end. So with that being said, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you, and, you know, the little complexities that I'm very happy to, and you'll all will be happy to note that, you know, as part of this, it's taking a big-picture look, because we know there's a lot of other things that are happening around that area, like Mr. Lunsford alluded to, a potential community center, and obviously the development of the MJB property there. So there's a lot to look into. So council, questions, comments? Ms. Moulton?
I'd just like to say thank you, Ms. Montine Salazar and Mr. Lunsford, and thank you to the generous donors of our community. This will be such a great benefit for our kids and our community as a whole, and I, from what I understand of all these documents, the subcontracts, it looks like it's going to be a very thorough approach to how to get this done in the best possible way. And if no one else has anything to add, I would like to make a motion that city council authorize the mayor to sign Contract 22043 PRK 001 with Grindline Skate Parks, Inc., in the amount of $120,235 to perform the skate park design and production of related bid documents.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Cleland, to award the skate park design and bid documents, 22043 PRK 001. Ms. Hunt? Oh, Mr. Walters, sorry.
I just wanted to weigh in on this. I'm very supportive of the contract. I'm hopeful that in the design process, we're able to apply some of the principles of crime prevention through environmental design, make sure that the resulting park has good visibility at all hours of the day, that it's got landscaping that doesn't block views, that it has, but also that it really brings up that end of town, so that it looks like a really nice amenity, not just a really nice skateboard park. And I think we've got a contract here that will allow for all of that.
Mayor Miller? So thank you, Mr. Walters. So in the conversation with the Quanians, that very topic came up, and so we've been, we've had conversations with Chief Floyd, our police chief, and we'll work with them throughout the design so that they feel comfortable as a police department, and then the community feels good about the whole entity of the park, and that it's a place that welcomes everyone, not just skaters, so that the whole community can enjoy it and benefit from it. So thank you for that, thank you for that question.
Yeah, thank you. Excellent point. Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Any other comments, council? Ms. Hunt?
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, on from, from, Mr. Carter?
I just had a quick question. Is this something that we'd be forming a committee with, like we did with, when we were going over the pool?
I think, as it's required with the contract, as they start collecting data, we'll see, we'll see where we need to go. I think that's part of the contract, is making sure all the inputs are coming in, but I don't know if that answered your question. Okay, we're on to Item F. Almost as exciting as the previous topic. We're going to talk about the contract award for wastewater treatment plant incinerator expansion joint and waste gas outlet duct replacement. Over to you, Mr. Buckmeyer.
That's just, thank you, Mayor. That's music to my ears when you say stuff like that. It is exciting to public works, yes. So tonight, we're seeking council consent to award a contract in the amount of $312,364.80 to C.H. Murphy Clark Olman Incorporated, and they're going to perform some work on our incinerator unit, replacement of some joint, expansion joints, and some duct replacement for us. As council's aware, our incinerator heat exchanger and exhaust system, that whole unit, is subject to some pretty harsh conditions. It's got a lot of high heat, followed by cooling, and there's a lot of contraction and expansion in that whole system, and it requires some periodic ongoing maintenance. Murphy Clark has performed work on this unit before us in the past, and so they know what they're doing, and we're familiar with them. And on top of that, there's some specialized metals that you can imagine that go into this, into this particular unit itself. With that, if there's no other questions?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, I suppose that we need to take action here to perform this maintenance, but we had also talked about looking at the universe of possibilities for replacement of the incinerator overall. Could we get an update on where that is?
Well, I can tell you at least one comment that I've had on this, is obviously we need to continue to track the costs of ongoing maintenance, but I think there's been some, well, I'll let Mr. Buckmeyer jump in and help me out on that one.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council member. So since the last time, I can't remember, I'm racking my brain here to think how many months ago it's been that we brought this to council, but call it six months, we, there has been some hint, maybe, or at least a word, coming from our regulatory agencies, the Department of Ecology, that is causing us to take another look at what we're doing for sludge handling. And in fact, incineration may not be as disfavored as it was the last time we talked, so fortunate that we didn't jump forward perhaps on what we were doing. The process that we were looking at is also still in favor, but incineration now, we're taking another look, the industry as a whole is taking another look at incineration, so does that help?
That's, that is how I would have tried to explain it, that we may be lucky to be one of five wastewater treatment plants that uses incineration, based on some of the discussions. But again, we'll, we'll continue to monitor the costs and continue to look at the options, because we do know the age of the plant, and we need to, we need to look at all those options.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
So to follow up there, it seems to me that the underlying premise, though, of replacement of the incinerator was that Public Works staff had determined that it was exceeding its useful life based on the cost of maintenance. If that's not still true, then I'd be interested in hearing more detail on that. If it is still true, then we still need to replace the incinerator, or upgrade the incinerator, or perform major maintenance on the incinerator, if incineration is still the direction we want to go. I guess I'm just suggesting that we have a much more detailed conversation about this cost, because it's a big deal, we're spending a lot of money on wastewater, and I would like to be fully in the know on what exactly it is we're doing with the incineration component of the wastewater treatment plant. But still, this particular item is well on its way here, and I'd move approval of this award.
Okay, that was a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton, to award contract for the wastewater treatment plant incinerator expansion joint and waste gas outlet duct replacement. And yes, noted, I take those comments to heart, and we'll make sure to continue monitoring our wastewater treatment plant future. So a motion and a second, any comments? Ms. Hunt?
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to Item G, 7G, contract modification, municipal broadband network, 2021 west side backbone, backbone expansion. Ms. Schu?
Good evening, mayor, council, and members of the audience. Tonight, I'm presenting a contract modification for our municipal broadband network for the west side backbone expansion. I'm going to bring up just a quick presentation. Before I begin, I just want to express my appreciation to Jim Lindbergh and to Tim Holman for the concerted effort that they made on working through this contract modification with Robinson Brothers Construction. The original contract with Robinson Brothers Construction was just over $5 million, and what you have before you tonight is a contract modification for $537,865,533. I think it's helpful to look at this in terms of the perspective of the project. This is our largest project that we'll have as part of our fiber expansion. It passes 2,300 premises, which is approximately 30% of our fiber project. There's over 105,000 feet of trenching and vault, and conduit placement, 938 vaults, and 379 multi-port terminal, service terminals, or NSTs. So it's a very large project. From the map, you can see we've divided it into four different sub-project areas, and just thought it'd be helpful to know that in this area in green, we have much of it in service. The splicing work is working here to get this area into service. We also have this kind of northern tip of the pink area in service, and a lot of the work has been done here in the yellow area. They'll finish up the pink construction and then move to this blue area. So it just gives you a little bit of a lay of the land. I think that it would be very reasonable to ask, why would we need a contract modification? And there's really five different drivers for this. There've been increases in the quantities of the existing work. We've added a new work scope that was directed by the city. There've been the addition of some, the addition of some materials that the contractor is providing, and then we've had just some unforeseen contractor costs. Those are coming from having additional hotel expenses, from asphalt material costs, inflation that's going, that's a part of the roadway restoration, and also fuel inflation. The project is taking longer than they originally expected, and so additional time is necessary for them to complete it. So those are the five underlying issues in terms of why we're asking for this contract modification. I thought, kind of, in conclusion, I thought it'd be helpful just to have a sense of where we are with the current status. So in the west end, we have 740 orders that we've been, that we have received, so that equates to about a 32.1% take rate. That's increased to 1% just from when we gave a presentation earlier this month. We currently have 106 customers in service with 24 partial installations complete. In terms of the construction status, this is a little bit dated, but 58% of the trenching and the vault work, vault placement is complete in this area. We're continuing to secure easements on the private streets, and on average, there's 2,000 feet of trenching that's occurring on a weekly basis, and that lines up with the projected completion date of June of 2022. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know that Mr. Lindbergh is also on the line with us in regard to this contract modification.
Thank you, Ms. Schu, and I'd just like to say I'm really proud of the team effort. I know I've talked to a couple of you on council about the original modification, and, but I'm, I just want to say how proud I am of the team effort, Fiber and Public Works, and even our contractor, working with the city to get this in line with a contract mod. This is, as Ms. Schu said, the most expensive, the most difficult part of our fiber installation, but it has the potential for the most customers. We're working in solid rock, and we've all heard from many of our constituents in that area, so again, I appreciate the work that's been done. So with that, council, questions from Ms. Schu?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal?
Ms. Schu, you mentioned that, I guess, our take rate has increased by about a percentage since the last meeting two weeks ago, roughly. So are we, are we getting roughly about 10 new orders a week out in that geography?
Just from a perspective, when I came, I believe it was the 10th of January, and presented in front of council, at that point, we had, I'm just looking at it, we had 732 orders, and, you know, currently, we're sitting at 740. So we've had, just in a matter of about two weeks, we've had eight new orders that have been coming. So that seems to be consistent.
Got it. Okay, so like eight, or maybe ballpark, 15 a month or something like that? So that's good. That'll, that'll take us up in, toward that 35% here in a couple of months.
Thank you.
I think this makes sense, actually. Digging through and looking at the line items and the contract modification, it's, you know, the price of construction, like, the price of everything has kind of gone up, and with some delays, we're, obviously, we're going to end up with more hotel room stays and things like that. So, yeah, this, this seems reasonable. I'll give other folks a chance to ask any questions or comments before maybe making a resolution.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, thank you for this updated request. Couple weeks ago, I looked at it, and I was taken back and concerned about the feasibility of this project in general. So having this, not quite line item, but an itemized list of what increases are necessary and why was very helpful and made me much more comfortable with this increase. I think that what we need to do moving forward is be very aware of how much the next phases will cost, and looking at what all of our options are. I just, we, this is kind of our biggest liability as a city, and we are going to have to finance some of it. So I am really pleased that it's at a much more digestible amount that I, that I can sleep at night for. So thank you for all of the work that was done by Fiber and Public Works, and Mayor Miller, and the contractor. So that's awesome. I just, I, I think we're going to have to be really careful about the next phases. I know that cost increases happen, but we also have a limited amount of money to do so. So thank you for all of your hard work on this.
Entertaining a motion. If there are no other comments?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal?
I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign a contract modification with Robinson Brothers Construction under Contract 21094 FBR 001 in the amount of $537,865.50, increasing the total contract price to $5,593,169.62. increasing the total contract price to $5,593,169.62, and extending the time by which the work must be completed. That was a long motion.
Yeah. Okay, I've got a motion now from Mr. McDougal, and a second from Mr. Carter to approve the contract modification as stated. Ms. Hunt?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. That being the last item on the agenda, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much for the efficient meeting. Have a good night.